Allegiance and invocation by Kim Bull.
(inaudible)
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 Dear Lord, you have promised throughout Scripture that we are never left to fight our battles alone. That is great news for all who are weary and burdened by the stresses of living. Therefore, having been justified by faith, may we have peace with God, who is Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, councilwomen. Next, roll call.
Markovich.
Here.
Pasalic.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Poland.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Enosah.
Here.
We have seven present and two absent. Next is for the distribution of council scholarship awards. Please come up. And I'm sure we'll get some help from the council here.
Sounds good. Well, thank you, President, and members of the common council. And as you remember, a couple of weeks ago, you helped me draw the scholarship winners. And tonight, we have 12 of our 15 winners with us this evening to accept them. And we also have certificates to hand out to them. And we have administrators from the schools here to help out with awarding them. But we also have a very special guest with us this evening. And I've been coming to this ceremony for a number of years. And we haven't had anybody from the Legacy Foundation show up. And as you know, the Legacy Foundation actually takes care of the purse strings for us in handing out the money. So I'm going to call Mr. Barry Tyler to the microphone first and let him say a few words. So, Mr. Tyler?
Good evening. I was just talking to Ms. Hayden, who was my guidance counselor at Hammond High School. I graduated from there in 2002. And I was telling her, the last time I was in this room, I was elected governor of Hoosier Boy State, and I was recognized at one of the common council meetings. So it's a great pleasure and honor to be here once again. I just want to congratulate all of you students for your wonderful track record throughout your high school careers. And I just want to say, good luck in the future. Legacy Foundation really prides itself in being a community foundation for Lake County. And we try to do whatever we can to inspire an environment of educational attainment throughout all of our students in all of our high schools. So once again, congratulations, and thank you for having me tonight.
And don't run away, Barry, because I'm going to ask him to stay up here and help also with awarding the scholarships tonight. First of all, I'd like to call upon our representative from Bishop Noe. We have with us tonight Michael McGroan, who is the assistant principal at Bishop Noe. Mr. McGroan.
On behalf of the principal, I want to thank the president of the common council for inviting us, also Mr. Tyler, is that correct? You know, for what you're doing for our young people. I want to bring up Paul Simkowski. Paul Simkowski is a very unique man for Bishop Noe. He is involved in the most activities of all of his senior class. So please be patient with me as I name these activities. Believe me, he's doing all of this at one time. Well, at various times. He is a member of the varsity soccer team. A lifetime, he's received a lifetime achievement award for theater. He's a student council officer, the copy editor for the school and paper, paper and yearbook. He's in the National Honor Society, the Squirrel Society. He's the head photographer. So we had a magical year in basketball, as you know. We lost in the final game by one point. It still hurts, but we're still in recovery from that. And he's also, he does live broad, he did all the live broadcasting for our home games and games, away games. All the while maintaining a 3.8 GPA, and he's ranked 14th in his class. And I can't say enough, because I always say to our Bishop Noe parents, we believe in family. And I have to, I have to pay homage to his parents, because true teaching starts at home. So I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Simkowski for coming, because they make my job a lot easier as assistant principal. Also, with all these various activities, and you know, he's going to Purdue to study computer software engineering. He loves math. And our guidance counselor, Mrs. Arnold, is also here, because she does a lot of guidance and really helping our students, you know, get to the point where they are today. So I want to thank you for all that you've done. And do we bring up Paul? Do we bring him up now?
Yes.
Mrs. Simkowski, Paul, can you come up, please? Can you present this? Okay. It's on behalf of, on behalf of the Legacy Foundation, you've been offered a $1,000 scholarship to pursue your dreams. Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause)
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Reed Amens, principal of Clark High School.
Good evening, councilmen and councilwomen. I also would like to thank you very much for this opportunity to come and recognize some of our finest students. We appreciate your time and efforts, and obviously, your financial dedication to our students, so that they can continue their educational career at the next level. So again, thank you very much from all of us at Clark. At this time, I'd like to recognize three students, three of our best students that we have at Clark, and have them come forward, please. And each one is present with at least one parent this evening. So I also want to thank them and let them know that I appreciate their efforts with their children as well. But first, I'd like to recognize Daniella Mata. Daniella is secretary of the Latino Club, member of the National Honor Society, and a member of our top 10 seniors. She plans on attending Indiana University, Purdue University Indianapolis, and hopes to have a career in the medical field, perhaps pharmacy, but at this time, her major is undecided. So at this time, Daniella, please come forward. Next, I'd like to recognize Charissa Guerrero. Charissa is also a member of the National Honor Society. She's been a four-year member of our Clark dance team. She is also a member of our student council and is ranked third in the class, a member of the top 10. She plans on attending Indiana University Bloomington in the fall. She has an undecided major, but would like to get a, possibly a career in journalism and/or broadcast. So Charissa Guerrero. And our third student this evening, I'd like to recognize Frank Robles. Frank unfortunately is planning to attend Purdue University West Lafayette. And hopefully, I'm sure he'll do fine there. But would like to major in political science and possibly have a career in law, where he'll probably be like a pre-law major, poli sci major. He's a member of our student council and is president of our senior class, Frank Robles. At this time, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal at Gavitt High School, Michelle Andis. Thank you.
Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I'd like to call forward two of my three candidates that are here tonight. First, Abigail Stern. (applause) Abigail at Gavitt was involved in swimming. She hopes to go to Ivy Tech and then eventually pursue a degree in nursing. (applause) The next Gavitt student I have is Nathan Shahaki. And Nathan is, was in cross-country and track at Gavitt, and was also a volunteer for the Chicago Marathon, and is looking to pursue a degree in computers at Purdue Cal. So Nathan. And the last student who could not attend tonight due to work is Nathan Ackerman. And Nathan is our student, in our student council. He is also part of the bowling team, and he plans on going to Purdue Cal and majoring in education. So, thank you.
I don't see any administrators here from Hammond High School, so I'm going to go ahead and do the Hammond High School recipients. The first one I'm going to call up is Darren Simpson. And Darren and I already talked, and he's going to tell you, say a few words about himself and what he does at Hammond High.
Well, I'm a senior. I'm ranked number 23 in my class right now. I've been in different organizations, like the Youth About Business organization. I was in trio with the Educational Talent Search and the Upper Brown. And I also went to, with the Boys and Girls Club with different organizations they have along with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to call up Juan Carrasco.
And Juan, if you could tell us a few things about yourself.
Well, I'm a senior at Hammond High School. I'm currently ranked fourth in my class. I plan on attending Indiana University Bloomington, majoring in accounting and business management, double major. The organizations and clubs that I'm in is Spanish club, history club, student government. I play a lot of sports. I run cross-country track, play basketball and football. And I actually have Coach Tyler as my football coach, so pretty much it. Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Friend, the principal at Morton High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. It is, gives us great pleasure to be here at the city of Hammond this evening, to honor such excellent students that are students in the school city of Hammond. But first and foremost, I'd like to go ahead and introduce my, one of my counselors, Susan Alomillo. Susan's been very instrumental in getting all our scholarships organized, and without Susan, sometimes I don't know if I, where I'm going half the time. So thank you very much, Susan. And also, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to tell you that at Morton High School, we are striving for student success, but we also work together as a team. Together, everyone achieves more. I think Mr. Hinojosa's probably heard that many a times, back in the 90s, when his daughters played for me at Morton High School. And also, we are also implementing the TAP program next year, which is the System for Teacher and Student Advancement Program. We are extremely happy about this program. Our community, our students, our teachers, we're all 100% gung ho about this program. And I have nothing but positive things that's going to happen for Hammond Morton High School. So again, thank you so much for having us here. But without further ado, I'd like to introduce the first of four recipients. The first gal is Tashana Bone. Tashana? Tashana is actually going to plan on going to IUPOI and majoring in nursing. Tashana Bone. Second young lady is Nicole Bandi. Nicole is planning to attend Purdue University Calumet and major in engineering. Nicole Bandi. Third young lady is Kalen Shabazz. Kalen is planning to attend Indiana University, Indiana Purdue University in Indianapolis and major in nursing. Kalen Shabazz.
(applause)
Which direction to go? Okay. And last but not least, is Ashley Overton. Ashley is planning to attend Indiana State University and major in pre-law. Ashley Overton. Again, I thank you so much. And Mr. Tyler, thank you so much for your support. Really do appreciate it. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, that concludes this. And I, once again, want to thank you and appreciate all the support and your investment in our youth. Thank you.
Thank you to the school city of Hammond, the Legacy Foundation, the honored students here, and their proud parents. We're very proud of you, and good luck, good luck to you. We're going to allow about a couple minutes of recess, in case there's some of you that would like to leave, we're going to continue with the meeting. But of course, I know you'd rather spend time with us and be here for another half-hour to an hour. So anybody that would like to leave, you could do so now. We're going to take a little recess.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
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 I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from 5:9 of 11:02. Second. Motion to the, motion about the minutes to passing of the minutes by Councilman Opinker, seconded by Dan Spitali. Any, anybody have anything on the minutes? If on the minutes? Hold on, let me see. Roll call vote?
No.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Enosah.
Yes. Ring of the minutes passed. Seven to two, no, seven, seven to two. Next is approval of the claims by Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims May 4 through May 18, for council meeting May 23, beginning with claims dated May 10 and ending with claims dated May 18. Claim number 2153 through claim number 2373. I so move.
Second.
Okay, that was to 23?
2153 to 2373.
Motion to approve the claims for May 18 through May 23, started with claims 2153 through 2373 by Councilman Bob Markovich, seconded by Kim Poland. Any discussion on the claims?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman.
We have a couple additions for the claims list. Claim number 2374, $181.77 to Rudy Grasha, reimbursement for defensive tactics training. Claim number 2375 to Steve Callag, $490.83. Defensive tactics certification. Claim number 2376 to Directions, Inc., U Support Seminar for Doty Callag &amp; Jones, $1,935.98. I so move.
Second. Okay, we have additions on the claims by Councilman Bob Markovich, seconded by Councilman Kowinski, Councilman Dan Spitali, for claims number 2374, 2375, and 2376. Any discussion on the additions? Any discussion on the additions? Any discussions? Roll call vote on the additions?
Markovich, yes. Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Enosah.
Yes. Additions passed, seven to two. Claims as amended. Any discussion? Claims as amended? Claims as amended? Roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
And Higgs.
Yes.
Enosah.
Yes. Claims passed, seven to two. Next is public hearings. 11-18.
Item A, ordinance 11-18, sponsored by Councilman Pasalic, and ordinance to man Hammond City Code, Chapter 36.160, pertaining to the municipal cumulative capital fund.
All right, the public hearing is now open for anybody wishing to speak on 11-18. Anybody out there wanting to speak on 11-18? Anybody else? 11-18, public hearings is now closed. Next, we have communications. Any communications out there? Any communications? Communications now closed. Next is committee reports. I believe nothing is coming out until the next meeting. Anybody? Committee reports? Committee report is now closed. Ordinance, third reading and final passage, we have none. Next is introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 11-21, sponsored by Councilman Opinker, and ordinance of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, joining the filing of a petition for the establishment of the proposed Calumet Burns Conservancy District.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Opinker.
I move to have 1121 passed through first and second reading and referred to as council as a whole.
Second. Okay, we have a motion for first and second reading, council as a whole, for 11-21, by Councilman Opinker, seconded by Councilman Kowinski. Any discussion on 11-21? Any discussion on 11-21? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item B, ordinance 11-22, sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance provide for proper decorum during public comment at regular meetings of the common council.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
And to represent Councilman Higgs in his absence, I would like this read on first and second reading and referred to council as a whole.
Okay, we have a, first is or second?
Second.
Okay, we have a, first by Councilwoman Poland, second by Councilman Markovich, for first and second reading of 11-22 and to be referred to council as a whole. Any discussion on 11-22? Any discussion on 11-22? Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
This ordinance is to provide for proper decorum during public comment at regular meetings of the common council. I believe Mr. Higgs had drafted this due to the comments, public comments before our last meeting.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any more discussion on 11-22? Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any ayes? Ayes have it.
President, and also, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Okay, next is resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 11R-06, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. A resolution confirming the appointment of Kevin Clutter as a commissioner of the Hammond Historic Preservation Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I move for a final passage for Resolution 11R-6.
Okay, we have motion for final passage of Resolution 11R-06 by Councilman Dan Spitali, and seconded by Councilman Kowinski. Any discussion on 11R-06?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman.
Glover, is this the guy that called the preacher?
That's...
Or related to him?
That's not the last name.
No?
Glover.
Glover?
Cutler.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That is...
I need a glass.
Not, I am. Any more discussion on 11R-06?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
Who is Kevin Clutter? Could I have a little information on him?
Councilman.
Yeah, he has served on some other boards in the past. Most recently, he was a contract researcher for the Heartland Historical Research Service. Also, too, he was one of the first volunteers for the Milwaukee Clipper here in the Hammond Marina. So he's been around, well-educated young man also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Any more discussion on 11R-06? More discussion? Any more discussion? Uh, roll call vote on eleven R dash oh-six.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Salinas. Poland.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Higgs. Henosom.
Yes. Eleven R dash oh-six passes eleven to two, I mean, eleven to zero, two absent.
Item B, Resolution eleven R dash zero-seven, sponsored by Councilman Opinkar. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, approving Hammond Redevelopment Commission Resolution five dash two-zero-one-one and the Hammond Plan Commission Resolution two-zero-one-one dash zero-one, both regarding an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Gateways redevelopment area.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Opinkar.
Move for final pa- passage of eleven R dash seven.
Second.
Uh, got a motion for final, final passage of eleven R dash oh-seven by Councilman Opinkar, seconded by Councilwoman Poland. Any discussion on eleven R dash oh-seven? Any discussion on eleven R dash oh-seven? Any discussion on eleven R dash oh-seven? Roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Poland.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Henos-
Yes.
Higgs. Okay.
Eleven R dash oh-seven passes seven to zero, two absent.
President, and also, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you.
Next on, on the agenda is new and unfinished business. New and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I'd like, like to mention that the Hammond Mohawks will be sponsoring the, uh, I believe fifty-third North Hammond Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May thirtieth. It kicks off at eleven AM, uh, in front of the, uh, Roller Dome Rink. Uh, will go down Goslin to Holman, Holman to One Hundred Thirty-Ninth, One Hundred Thirty-Ninth to Johnson, where it makes its way back to St. Cas for a memorial service, uh, at the church grounds. Thank you.
New and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
I'd like to announce, um, many of you know Ruth Tall. She's been very active on several boards in Hammond. Uh, she was a past member of the, um, Hammond Housing Authority Board and a current member of the Disabilities Commission. Her son, Eric, uh, suddenly passed away, uh, last Tuesday morning. He was the oldest of her two sons. He was a graduate of Hammond High End, but current recipient of the Bridges Workshop in Highland. Visitation and funeral services are going to be Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, at Smith, Bezzel, and Warner Funeral Home, uh, from nine AM to eleven. That's in, uh, forty-two oh-nine Grant Street, Gary, Indiana. And, uh, Ruth Tall was a great mother, was a wonderful friend of mine, and I'm sure she would appreciate you stopping by or phone call right now. Very tough time for her, and she certainly served our Hammond boards very well. Keep you, keep her in your prayers, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. New and unfinished business. New and unfinished business is now closed. Next, we have public expression. Larry Repchak.
Good evening, thank you for allowing us this opportunity. Uh, regarding the resolution, uh, on decorum, uh, I thoroughly agree that something is needed. I was not here at the last meeting, I just heard a little about it, and I'm sure it was something that, uh, has led to this action. And, and there are clearly cases, what, that I've observed, where speakers in public expression clearly are abusing the privilege and showing a lack of respect. And so, and there are times when I thought, in fact, the officer on duty might get involved, and I wish he had. But in any case, uh, occasionally, when I speak, on those rare occasions when I do, I will, in attempt to focus and cut to the chase, I will often, or sometimes say, uh, Councilman Kalwinski, who is my representative, I'll mention, I spoke to him or whatever, just to sort of advance the, uh, the discussion a bit and stay within my time limit. I hope that's not going to be, uh, regarded as, as a, as something that will get me banned, because occasionally I have to do, I feel that that helps make the, the case or the point. Uh, clearly, we owe you, the members of the council, the respect of being able and given the, the opportunity to speak in front of you. Uh, on the other hand, you serve us, and so, you know, there's a dynamic here that we all want to stay within, uh, the proper framework of. I do want to make one point, though, that continues to rankle me. That is, on those, on those occasions, when the, there is a call, when there is an important issue being discussed, and the, uh, suggestion is made or the motion is made that we suspend the rules and allow the people to speak on a particular issue in advance of the end of the meeting, public expression. I would hope that in the future, that you would all allow us to do it. We're told about coming out and investing our time and giving up and whatnot and coming here to get involved in our government, and, for instance, recently, the yard sale thing. We wanted a chance to speak, there were people here who wanted to make a case to speak, and we were allowed to speak by a slim margin of one. The four people who voted to deny us that opportunity, I think, was a definite show of disrespect for the people who come out here and want to make their case. Similarly, three and a half years ago or so, when this bond issue for the big golf course restaurant, we had a room full of people here who came to speak in favor of it on the part of the mayor. The rules were suspended so that they could all speak, and then when a motion was made that a similar suspension of rule should be made so that the opponents of it could speak, the businessmen and the bankers and the, those of us residents, that was turned down. And I would just urge everyone on the council that, in those rare instances when that motion is made, that we can come and make our case in front of you in advance of a vote, that you would do that. That's, uh, I think, a form of mutual respect that all of us who attend these meetings would greatly appreciate. Thank you.
Next speaker is George Stoia.
George Stoia, Robertsdale. Uh, I want to speak on the same thing that, uh, the Maestro was speaking about, uh, with respect to this so-called proper decorum ordinance. I don't know, part of me just wants to scream, Anthony, my brother, what are you saying? I, I, ugh, you know? I mean, and ordinarily, I'd say he was pulling our chain, but, you know, the, the Indiana Supreme Court recently came out with a decision saying, you can't defend yourself against unlawful entry by policemen into your house on your person. You can go to court, whoopee doo. How about that? You got the money for a lawyer? You got a lawyer to take a non-contingency fee? Maybe walk, walk you over to, to the court over here and file a section nineteen-eighty-three? Hopefully, hopefully, your case is strong. My guess is you may get one crack at it before they start, uh, the Indiana legislature starts supplementing all that stuff with immunities up the wazoo. Anyway, I'm curious, this, this section one, what's the standard? Who's to say what's decorum and what's not decorum? Who's to say what's personal, what's political? I was here when those women attacked Anthony, and that was in a political context, that was political speech. Now, yeah, it got a little rough, but that had to do with his election. They were complaining about his campaign claims. Sorry, Anthony. And all this stuff, you know, I mean, and then, and then using this phraseology here, the Common Council finds that there have been abuses of the privilege by certain- Privilege? I believe there's a First Amendment. Now, there may be a privilege that you, in your beneficence, allow us to speak and address you. Thank you. For the, what, three minutes, or do you guys sometimes chop it down to two? I'm sorry, I don't have that much deference for this. You guys just passed a weird old ordinance, uh, that decimated the right to use your own property. We got the Indiana Supreme Court saying you can't defend yourself, and now, and I know, now they say you can't use the First Amendment. Are you guys, I hope Anthony's just pulling our chain, I hope you guys are pulling our chain, because there's no standard, I don't know how you're gonna enforce this. So, I've just, I'm worried about this council. I am truly worried, and I'm not just saying rhetorically. We've got some real, you want to talk about abuses? Apparently, this authority you guys have is possibly gone to your heads. And all this deference, ain't gonna get none from me, I guarantee you that.
The Chair would like to, uh, recognize former Fifth District Councilman Dan Repay is here. Uh, next speaker is George Stoia, I mean, uh, George Janik.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, also, good evening, former Councilman Dan Repay. Anyway, uh, we're back to, we're back to, uh, creating a rule to govern decorum during public expression, and as elected official, I can tell you that you don't have to require public expression, and now you're going to, you've already restricted it to three minutes, and you already have rules in place for outbursts and show, and demonstrations or shows of demonstration here, and so now, we're going to pass another rule to govern another rule on already restricted amount of public expression. So, why not just get rid of it completely then, if that's the case? It's too loosely worded, it offers too much opportunity for too much, uh, loose interpretation. Anything can be called criticism, uh, and as a result, you might as well not have public expression. As far as the Conservancy District is concerned, there's another redundancy, another layer of government for what reason? What reason is it to establish another elected board to govern the control of a situation that's already being controlled? It was mentioned in caucus that the governor doesn't care about Lake County or about Hammond. If that was the case, then why did he reach across the aisle and appoint, uh, a well-known Democrat to head up the, as executive director, the Little Cal River Basin Commission? Who knows better the problems that are involved with that river and its needs and its operating and maintenance costs? And that's what we're talking about more than anybody that has been involved in that currently. And it's a bipartisan effort, it's not that he doesn't care. The fact is that it's a matter of finding out, establishing the right revenue source. Obviously, if that solution had been in place, the monies could be more effectively channeled by an existing organization, the Cal River Basin Commission, whose existing director already understands the construction and the operation and maintenance needs, let him take care of that since he is accountable already, records can be documented, and any other, uh, issues concerning that can be more readily, uh, resolved by a one person and an a- an established agency than a group of nine elected people, and also empowering them with taxing authority. Do you know that? That's exactly what a Conservancy District's going to have, is taxing authority. Where does it stop? How much money can they raise? What are the limitations? Who's going to distribute it? Is it going to be adequately distributed or dispersed with regards to maintenance on that particular river? And what length of it? What about the issues on both sides of Lake County? Because, you know, that river doesn't have enough sense to stop at the geopolitical boundaries of Lake County itself. What are you gonna do then? Are you gonna have conjunct-, uh, collaborative, uh, Conservancy Districts on both sides or all the way down the river from beginning to end? Those are questions you have to ask yourself. Why create another unnecessary level of government that has taxing authority? Reinvent the wheel when it's already there? The reason the funding was shut down was the fact that, uh, it was, it was being embattled down in the state legislature. Give them an opportunity to turn around, take the solution to the legislature, bring it, bring it back up here to an existing agency. Thank you.
Thank you, and our last speaker is Alvin Cheeks.
Alvin Cheeks, Allen Block of Merrill. Um, the first issue I came for is for my son, he kind of chickened out on me. But, uh, what's going on is, is that we've endeavored on giving out golf clubs to youth to play golf. My son plays golf, and we'd like to see a putting hole right out here in, in the park on the east end of the, uh, Parkway. Um, also, too, we've, we've got an agreement with Nike to provide golf clubs. One of my cousins, the Vice President of Marketing, he's agreed to help us out with some golf clubs. First T provided some of golf clubs this past weekend, about fifty of them. The second issue that I'm here for is in regards to the ordinance that, uh, Councilman Higgs put forth. Um, many years ago, I, I went to jail in this very room for, uh, speaking publicly. At that time, um, I had the opportunity of have a great lawyer, John Seneca. So, I took this current ordinance to John Seneca, who's one of the top lawyers in the United States, the number-two law firm in the United States. Also, too, I took it to Henshorn Gerberstein, the number-one law firm in the United States in regards to constitutional law. We, I, it got vicious in here last council meeting, but that's what politics is all about. We have an arbitrarily right to speaking at here. Um, the person that has the gavel has arbitrary right to, to end that person's arbitrarily speaking. But I think the council is, is getting into a realm where it can cost them a lot of money in terms of arbitrarily stopping us from, uh, having our constitutional right. And I, I for one, you know, believe in my constitutional right, and I for one will, will fight for it however far it takes me. Because the United States is based upon us having arbitrarily right to speak. You know, those people who come out, they, they come out, sometime it gets kind of heated in here. I for one have, have challenged the system in many ways, the police, the government. But the one thing that I love about the United States Constitution is I had a right to be heard. That's what has to happen here on the council floor, is that we should be heard. You know, some of those people came out and they, they got a little personal, but politics is a full-contact sport. So, anyone that thinks that it's not, you know, I'm a, I'm a fan of Councilman Higgs. I, I saw part of the document, I didn't have a chance to look at it all, but just in the first part, I kind of just let some other people read it, and they said that it's no way in the world that that document can stand arbitrarily in any courtroom. So, I would hope this council, you know, just lets it sit in committee for a year and just let it die, you know, because it is no way in the world that document can uphold in a, in a court of law, so thank you.
Thank you, Alvin. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We're early. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Kathy Pasalic. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes?
No.